Good evening, I'd like to call the school board's business meeting together. We welcome everyone for coming out tonight. We're going to proceed right along with our agenda. We have some important areas we want to make sure we give plenty of time to. Ms. Doh, I believe you have some opening remarks.
So, good evening and thank you for calling your time. Request that all cell phones and pagers be turned off. As part of the tradition, to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors and reciting the pledge of allegiance. Presented by the National Junior ROTC colors from Granby High School under the direction of Chief Warren Ock. Eyes and remain standing for the presentation of colors and reciting of the pledge of allegiance. We will now have the presentation of colors.
Colors, hope, order, arms, ready, cut, left, face, present, colors, ready, cut.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Okay, we'd like to begin our meeting with the superintendent's report, Dr. Boone.
Good evening, Mr. Jordan, members, good evening, Mr. Jordan, members of the school board, ladies and gentlemen. Each month, we have an opportunity to present highlights of the happenings in Norfolk public schools. And so, I always like to express appreciation to the communications department and Channel forty-seven for bringing this video each month. So, I'll ask them to roll the video, please.
Over two hundred volunteers from the community, military, and the school district came together for a one-day build of a brand-new Kaboom playground at Souls Point Elementary. Because the school has the highest concentration of military-connected students in our district, finding people who wanted to be involved with this exciting project was no problem.
Well, it started with the Military Child Coalition getting us the grant to have this built. When I first started working with them, I started with them, and then it went to Kaboom, who builds playgrounds, and then Carmax. We finally found out who the funder was gonna be, and it was Carmax. It took a lot of folks to come together to build this playground.
We started two months ago. We had this design day where we kicked everything off. We met with sixty students here at Souls Point, and they all drew their dream playgrounds. They're up in the cafeteria, you saw. They had zip lines, they had climbing elements, they wanted one of the most challenging playgrounds that they could get, and so that's what we built here today.
This is actually the kickoff to our Military Week of Play, where across the nation, we're doing something like this in about ten locations just all this week. And so, this is one of our bigger builds where we're actually installing a full-blown playground here at Souls Point Elementary, but we also have some of the projects that we're doing simultaneously throughout the country. So, it's really exciting.
Not only did the school receive a new playground, there were also new picnic tables and benches, along with a map of the United States painted on the blacktop. Despite the unseasonably warm day, the volunteers remained upbeat while shoveling mulch, painting, and constructing the state-of-the-art playground.
It's been a lot of volunteers out here happily giving dedicated work to benefit our children, so it's just been great to see all the volunteers, all the partners. Everybody's been dedicated, moving in teams, and so it's really been a great day. Well, this is what we talk about every day. We say the partnerships matter, the commitment from the community, the fact that it takes the family, the home, the child, and the school system working together. I think this is a perfect example of that.
Well, I think this is incredible. I mean, you know, the amount of students that we have, military students here, over eighty percent of the school population is military children. So, but this will benefit, obviously, the entire population, so it's very exciting. Very exciting to see all the community come out and participate. Very exciting to see Carmax come out, support this Kaboom, and their initiative, and how many playgrounds they've done around the country. It's really pretty cool.
At the end of the build, everyone celebrated together, especially when Carmax donated another ten thousand dollars to the school. For all those willing to give up their time and funding, this day was about the young people who will enjoy this playground for years to come.
It's amazing, and I really didn't expect to be this many people, and it's really nice. I like the way they put the wheelchair access, so no one has to feel left out here. It feels nice to know that everyone wants to come and join in to make these kids have fun.
I'm so excited because on our old playground, it's like we could do nothing. We were just standing there like, what is there for me to do? They try so hard to allow kids to have fun at this school. We had to raise eighty-five thousand dollars just for this playground to be here, and it makes me feel that everybody cares for us as little children, that a lot of people care.
Everyone from parents, teachers, and students, to the governor and First Lady of Virginia, gathered to celebrate the art of being a military child exhibit opening at MacArthur Center. The event, which took place at origin, the Governor's School for the Arts Gallery, featured over two hundred pieces of artwork from elementary students in schools with a high concentration of military-affected children. A variety of dignitaries were on hand to speak during the program, including the superintendent, school board chair, the mayor, the commanding officer of the Norfolk Naval Station, and the First Lady and Governor of Virginia. But the highlight of the evening was recognizing the young artists who did such an outstanding job of translating their feelings into artwork.
It's very important to me, and my dad and I have a strong connection, so I want to incorporate all that into a picture. It's just about me, my dad, and then in the background, just the letters and emails I sent him. You can be happy, sad, and frustrating, but it's just awesome because you're serving the country, too.
Honestly, it's more than, it's really more than I expected, because I came in earlier and had a chance to see some of the artwork and read some of the captions connected with it. It's just like, it's so moving. You know, you think about the parents, the mother and the father, that's out there serving our country, but these kids are just as engaged and just as committed to service as their parents are, and it shows in this artwork.
Students whose artwork won top honors received a certificate, a ribbon, and a gift card from MacArthur Center. Although this is the first year that Norfolk Public Schools has participated in this special program, there seems to be plenty of room for growth, and a real desire to ensure that military-connected students know they will always be welcome in our school district.
Well, it's important certainly to recognize our military, because we have the largest Navy base in the country, and so we have a lot of military students in our schools, and so we really want to recognize them, let them know that they are a part of us, and help them to transition, whether it be in our system as well as...
We love our military. We want to make sure we're doing everything we can for our families. If you're deployed overseas, you want to make sure their children are safe and getting a great education here, and we're gonna do everything we can. So, I really want to thank the Norfolk Public Schools for raising the awareness of how important these children are to our community and to our nation, because it is a family unit when you are in the military, and I think this really highlights the importance of military children.
That's really what we're all about, is all about the children, is we can help comfort families when they're deployed or they're reintegrating. We want the children to understand that we know what they're going through, and that we want to be there for them, and we want to help celebrate that all the family is sacrificing, and we appreciate that. So, we just feel very honored and excited. This is just one of many events to come.
The Rotary Club of Norfolk invited students from all five of Norfolk's high schools to a luncheon to celebrate everyone involved with their career visitation program. Within the program, students shadow rotarians in career fields they're interested in, and then write an essay about the experience. The four-winning essays were read aloud by their authors during the luncheon. This career visitation program enables the rotarians to share their experience and knowledge while giving students the chance to consider their futures.
It's very important, because Rotary, in its mission, is vocational service. We have to do something that helps the business community. We have a four-way test you see right behind me that talks about things being fair and ethical and the truth, and so this was just a program, a good way for us to reach out to students and share those ethics with them.
I learned a lot from Judge Massey, so he really experienced, like, he really inspired me to write, 'cause at first, I didn't think I would have to write an essay, because I did start writing it so late, because I did go on my own shadowing so late. So, because Judge Massey did, he inspired me to write, so when we had a break after all his cases, we're helping the kids, I actually sat in his little office, and I sat in his office, and I just started writing whatever was on my mind.
I have an interest in law, and so I was able to shadow one of Norfolk, in my opinion, one of Norfolk's best attorneys, Mr. Charles Vogon, and he really gave me a new outlook on law and what lawyering was all about, and I really got to see the in-depth, day-to-day experience of an attorney. It's an amazing feeling. We don't often get to see the real-life experiences in career fields, and we don't get that exposure enough in school, and I think that this was just an amazing opportunity for me to be able to shadow someone who's in the profession that I, you know, am interested in.
Approximately fifty-five fourth and fifth grade students from around the district competed against each other in the twenty-four math challenge at the Lambert's Point Community Center. The twenty-four math challenge builds skills by having students determine how to use all four numbers on a game card in mathematics equations that equal twenty-four. The first to figure it out gets the card, and the student with the most cards at the end of the round wins.
It's a game that students play all year long, and today, we have twelve elementary schools that have gathered the top players from their schools, and they're going to compete to be the Math twenty-four champion. It's an initiative that we began a few years ago, and it's just working with students to build fluency so that they can become better mathematicians.
After several hard-fought rounds of play, Luke Vaudry, a fifth grader from the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, emerged as the champion. Congratulations to all the participants. Twelve Chesterfield Academy students were on hand for the Youth Resilience Strategy Roundtable at ODU's Baron and Ellen Gordon Art Galleries. This event, hosted by the Elizabeth River Project, joins community and government agencies to bring attention to Hampton Roads' increasing threat of tidal flooding and storm surge. The Chesterfield students are partnering with the Elizabeth River Project to help find ways to combat rising sea levels and develop plans of action to ensure the safety of current and future residents of Hampton Roads.
We have about seventy-five leaders, administrators from Norfolk Public Schools, Portsmouth Public Schools, and twelve youth resilience leaders from Chesterfield Academy gathering at the Youth Strategy Resilience Roundtable. And so, what does that mean? Well, we've been working all year with the support of several funders like NOAA and Hampton Roads Community Foundation, the Batten Foundation Fund, and they brought it together, a wonderful project where we've been working with youth to address flooding and sea level rise. Today, we're hoping that they take away that they have been serving as great leaders and mentors, learning what they can do to be safe in our flooded area when it floods and during weather emergencies and extreme weather, and also serve as mentors and leaders on what we can do to become more resilient.
About two hundred fifth graders from Jaycocks and Coleman Place Elementary Schools visited Old Dominion University for a day of learning. This special event, entitled "Celebrating Black Excellence: Full Steam Ahead," enabled students to choose from forty-five different classes in order to experience learning in a college environment. Following their classes, students went to an interactive exhibit fair that showcased design projects and gave them the opportunity to further interact with college students. Members of the Norfolk Commonwealth's Attorney's Office and law students from the College of William &amp; Mary stopped by Madison Alternative Center to continue their work with the mentoring program. The law students, who were there as new mentors, met with Madison students in a group in order to get to know them better, while the Commonwealth's attorneys met individually with their mentees. By spending time with the students, these mentors are hoping to encourage them and help them learn to make better decisions later in life.
A lot of people, their only interactions with criminal justice system, which I work with, it's only during bad times. So, something tragic has happened, something's gone wrong. So, when you're given the opportunity to affect children in a positive way, it's, not just children, but the community as well, I believe it benefits all. Each time I come here, there's a new student that I'm interacting with, and it has been a wonder, it's been a wonderful time for me to be able to interact with all of them.
Some kids at a school like Madison might think that they have been given up on, and some kids might think, well, this is a school of last resort. We're here to let them know that we haven't given up on you. We're here to let them know that we believe in them, we're gonna encourage them, we're gonna be role models for them, and we're gonna let them know that they can succeed, and they shouldn't give up on themselves.
Nearly two hundred Norfolk Public Schools teachers received interactive classroom management training, thanks to a new partnership with Old Dominion University. This unique training utilized an innovative tool called Mersion, which uses avatar students that together act like a real class. The virtual classroom enables teachers to freely try out different instructional approaches in a no-risk setting and get feedback directly from their peers.
Well, today, what I'm hoping is that they're able to see the cooperative learning content that they're learning about in theory and translate that into some real actionable strategies that they can take back with them into their classrooms. We've all been to professional development sessions where we hear a lot about the theory and not so much about how those theories can be applied to the real challenges on the ground in the classroom, and that's what I'm hoping the teachers will take out of their work in the lab today.
It allows you to try to engage the students more. You can find techniques that you think that will work in assimilation, and then try to use it within your classroom if it comes out working within assimilation. Even as a music teacher, you know, we still need that different training to see what we can do to make sure that our classrooms are running smoothly as well.
You know, training in retaining new teachers is a national issue, so we want to see if we can meet the teachers where they are, and where they are is, right now, technology. So, this gives them the opportunity to practice with a non-threatening environment, but it's almost within their medium and their element of the 21st century skills we're looking for.
KPMG hosted a book giveaway at Jaycocks Elementary School as part of their National Families in Literacy Initiative. The auditing firm donated one thousand books to the school, plus each student got to take home a book of their choice. Enthusiastic volunteers from KPMG also read books to students during their visit.
Oh, it was so exciting to see the kids see me in costume. I probably have given out five hundred hugs today, and everyone's just so excited, but on top of that, the kids are really excited about reading, and they were excited to hear their stories and so excited to take their books home.
What do fruit smoothies and exercise bicycles have in common? The Norfolk Public Schools Blender Bike. This unique exercise bike was retrofitted with a state-of-the-art blender that is powered by the rider. Now, our students will have the chance to create their own healthy fruit smoothies and get some great exercise as well. The ultimate goal is for children to learn to enjoy a healthy snack by making it fun.
So, today, we have the big debut of our blender bike. We're really, really, really excited about this fun toy for kids to use. It's a great way for the kids to learn how to cook healthy, eat healthy, and also stay active. I think the kids are very excited about the blender bike. So far, they've loved it, they've really enjoyed the smoothies, so I think they're seeing fruits and vegetables in a different way, and who doesn't love to jump on a bike and blend up a smoothie?
For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNPSTV forty-seven or the NPS website.
Thank you, Channel forty-seven and the Communications Department, and I tell you, riding the blender bike was a lot of fun. Shoveling mulch was a lot of fun, but more importantly, we get a chance to show the community what we're doing with our children. It's not just about sitting in rows and the academics, but we're connecting academics to life in a meaningful way, and so we were very pleased to be able to showcase a few of the things that have gone on in Norfolk Public Schools since our last meeting. And I believe that's it for the superintendent's report tonight.
All right, thank you very much. We will proceed on with our agenda. Next up is citizens' comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Hopefully, anyone who wishes to speak tonight has signed up with the clerk. What we would ask you to do when your name is called, if you please follow these steps, you may come forward to the speaker's podium in front of me. Podium may be adjusted to suit your height. State your name, whether you have a child in the school system, if you're employed by the school system, or any other relevant information you would like to provide. Please state your position, give any facts, other relevant data. If you have information you'd like to give to the board, you can hand those over to Ms. Banks, our school board clerk, and she'll make sure we receive that. If you represent a group or an organization, you may ask others to rise with you and be recognized if you so desire. Speakers are limited to one appearance of three minutes. When the clerk signals that your time is up, please quickly end your comments and be seated. School board does not respond to citizens' remarks at the time that they are given. So, Ms. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. We have ten speakers signed up this evening. Our first two speakers are James Jarman and Zariel and Zarian Anthony. Good afternoon, Board. My name is James Jarman. I reside in the city of Norfolk. I was born and raised in the city of Norfolk. I had my education in the city of Norfolk. I got my degrees in the city of Norfolk, and I will probably pass away in the city of Norfolk. I came to speak to you briefly about the Southside STEM Academy at Camp Ostella. I anxiously went through the lottery process. I have an eleven-year-old son. I am a single parent with sole custody, and with much anticipation and fanfare, noteworthy people as the mayor, former councilman Don Hester, Riddick and others endorsing the school. I was anxious to get my son into that school. I did prevail, and I was able to get into that school. Once I got in, I sat in a preschool orientation class with approximately seventy-four people that came to same, through the same gateway I did, the lottery. In that orientation, several, to say the least, people had only two or three questions. Those questions were, are the people in the neighborhood, are the people in the project going to attend this school? When the truth was given to them, the answer was, it's a neighborhood school. Several, and I say again, to lease, got up and walked out and said they weren't interested. So, at the onset of the inception of the school year, it was approximately forty-one people left from that lottery process. Having come from Churchill in Portsmouth before gaining custody of my child, I realized that diversity is very important in our system. And basically, what happened on that date is many of the people with ethnicity other than mine, sorry, left. So, I would ask the school board if they would go by and put a hands-on approach on that school and get them people help, because unlike those people, my resolve was not to get up and lead. My resolve was to roll up my sleeves and help financially, as a volunteer, whatever I can do, and I think I have proved that during the school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Zariel Anthony, and I'm a sophomore at Granby High School.
And my name is Zarian Anthony. I'm also a sophomore at Granby High School, and today, we're here as members of Y Street. Y Street is a youth volunteer program of the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth that focuses on promoting healthy living in Virginia. We are here to talk about how the Twenty-four Seven Campaign helps Virginia's schools become tobacco-free twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. You may remember us from earlier this year when we came to discuss updating our division tobacco policy to become a hundred percent comprehensive. We are so excited to see the changes that were made to our policies, such as extending the definition of property to include on- and off-site events, whether owned, leased, or chartered by the division, adding a provision to extend cessation resources to students and staff, and prohibiting the student use, possession, and distribution in all policy documents. You have already shown a strong commitment to the health and safety of our school and community, and we thank you for all of the updates made so far. Although it is a very strong policy, there are a few updates to be made so that our division can be a hundred percent comprehensive. We have provided a copy of our current KGB and KGC policies and the recommended updates to use as a reference.
We ask that these policies also reflect the language that would be updated in the student and staff use of tobacco products. That way, it is clear that all policies adhere to the same tobacco and e-cigarette-free language. Additionally, having the same language throughout helps with the compliance and enforcement of the policies. As a partner resource of the Norfolk City School Division, we are here to offer our help to update these policies that our division can become a hundred percent comprehensive. Once you decide to adopt these policies, clearly making our schools a hundred percent comprehensively tobacco-free, we have great ways to show support. First, we will provide free tobacco-free signage to all schools in your division. Second, our free tobacco-free toolkit will be sent out to all schools in your division. Third, we will add you to our official map of a hundred percent comprehensive divisions on handouts and websites. Finally, in your folder, you will find examples of how we can help your school division earn positive publicity for updating our policy. On behalf of Y Street, we thank you for taking the time to hear more about the Twenty-four Seven Campaign, and we hope that the Norfolk City School Division will become the twenty-ninth school division with a one hundred percent comprehensive tobacco-free policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speakers are Tavon Taylor and Desiree Elliott.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tavon Taylor, PTA, Vice President, and Staff Member currently at Southside STEM Academy at Camp Ostella. Tonight, I stand before you on behalf of my principal, Dr. Rhonda Ambrose. We received some devastating news that our devoted leader has been selected to be a part of the transition process for the upcoming school year. I stand tonight to express some interesting thoughts on how this drastic change could affect the students, staff, and community of the Southside STEM Academy at Camp Ostella. During my current tenure, I've had the opportunity to professionally and personally experience the devoted leadership of Dr. Ambrose upon returning to Norfolk Public Schools. In attendance of another amazing convocation, Camp Ostella Elementary received awards for double-digit gains in all content areas for the 2015-2016 school year. During this school year, Camp Ostella Elementary was housed at 2600 East Princess Anne Road. I watched Dr. Ambrose lead and direct both buildings, Camp Ostella Elementary as well as Berkeley Early Childhood Center prior to the move. As a new principal in 2013-2014 school year, Dr. Ambrose was passed the torch of supervising both locations, which could have been a challenge to some, but taken on by her as an opportunity for change for students, parents, and the community. During this process, the tireless efforts her staff demonstrated was the ability to carry out daily instruction, as well as pack and prepare for the physical transition of the school buildings. The process was seamless as they followed the example set by their leader. As she continued throughout the summer, she never missed a step in ensuring both schools were reunited into its original location in the new building while continuously reminding us of our motto, "One team, one dream." Also, under her current leadership, her staff continues to give themselves effortlessly. Recently, as a well-orchestrated support team, an amazing after-school program has been developed and executed to include, but not limited to, a marching ensemble of one hundred and seven cardinals, which is our mascot, a step team, an art club, a sixth-grade basketball team. This program was designed to increase academic excellence and promote positive behavior. As of March 2017, we have had a decrease in minor incidents and a higher rate of work submitted by the students who participate in these activities. The program afforded our students some lifetime memories, such as participating in Earth Day at Mount Trashmore, the NATO Parade downtown Norfolk, as well as meeting Hall of Famer Allen Iverson. As I close, all of what you have heard cannot be possible without our dedicated, hard-working... As I close, all of what you have heard cannot be possible without our dedicated, hard-working, loyal, innovative, professional leader, Dr. Rhonda Ambrose. I ask with the sincerest heart that you will reconsider the decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Desiree Elliott, PTA President at Southside STEM Academy, Camp Estella. I'm also an employee there as well. My question for tonight is, what type of culture is conveyed by a school board who seeks to reward the hard work of our principals in Title I areas by giving demotions or terminations after years of pouring into the area's Title I schools? We, under the leadership of Dr. Rhonda Ambrose, have experienced an upward trend of our test scores. That is to say, double-digit increases across all content areas. All the while working with deficits. For example, we don't have an SRO, an SSO, or a dean in the building to handle discipline problems. We have worked tirelessly to get across all of the humps and everything that has been in the way. And Dr. Ambrose came into the school under priority. It was already in priority when she received it, and she jumped right in there and got to work. And we, as her employees, jumped in and worked with her. And if that meant late nights and early mornings, we were only too glad to do it in order to help our children. And I think that that hard work should be rewarded in not giving her a demotion back to the classroom. There is definitely a more respectful way that things could be done. We can all understand if you have to shift people around, but there is a way to do anything. And we want to reward the hard work that she has given us. She definitely has put her heart and soul into helping the community, the people that work there, the children that go there. You know, we all love her, and we all give her 100% of our hard work, 110% to be exact. Whatever it is she needs to help those kids, we are right there to help her because she's right there. And it is definitely, you know, hard to deal with when you have to take the amount of work that you have put in like that over the years and kind of take that type of demotion. We just ask today that you just kind of consider all the work that's been done, all of the gains that have been made over the years that she's been there, the four years total that she's been there. Look at the culture of the school before she came and the things that were going on and what she walked into and what you guys handed her when she initially took the job. And just kind of respect that situation and do things in a fashion that will give her the opportunity to move on. If she has to, if that's her decision, that's fine. But to move on in a respectful manner, hold her head up, knowing that she has helped the Southside immensely in the last four years that she has given us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Dawn Merkel, followed by Diane Outlaw.
Good evening, Dr. Boone and school board members. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Dawn Merkel. I am a resident of downtown Norfolk. I also work in downtown Norfolk. I'm an attorney with Wilcox and Savage. I also sit on the Programs and Allocations Committee for the Norfolk Education Foundation. And I do pro bono work at the Southside STEM Academy for parents and staff through their Parent Resource Center. And I have two children in the school system. This is their first year out of private school and into the Norfolk school system. One is at Maury High School as a ninth grader, and my fourth-grade student is at the STEM Academy. And so I am here also to talk about how important, I think, what the school does with the STEM Academy is, not just for the people who actually live next door and their children are walkers and they're in the Southside community, but for the city of Norfolk as a whole. My daughter, obviously, we live in downtown, we're outside the zone. She was a lottery, chosen through the lottery to attend the school. I attended the same meeting as Mr. Jarman. I saw the questions that people brought, who had been chosen from the lottery outside of zone, asked. I know what they were implying and what they were getting at. It was slightly embarrassing, I thought, to have that expressed as it was. And there were people who actually got up and left during the meeting. I will tell you, Dr. Ambrose's response to those questions was one of the things that I was so impressed about. And I knew that that was not a concern that I would have because I could tell that her focus was on the children and on giving them the best education. And the idea of having a STEM academy, a true STEM-based education here in Norfolk, to me was exciting. And because of her answers, because of what the potential opportunity, I did not leave. And like Mr. Jarman, my daughter attended and has had a great year. And I have had, I've been incredibly impressed. There were a lot of bumps. I know one of the other speakers talked about the bumps, and I saw it the first day. There was chaos in how dismissals were done. And two weeks later, it was running seamlessly. And you saw Dr. Ambrose and all of her staff working day and night. I also didn't mention, I also have a spouse. My husband teaches at Lake Taylor High School, so he actually teaches a lot of the brothers and sisters of the kids at the STEM Academy. And one thing we've seen through our experience is what's incredibly important to these students. I think all students, but most particularly for these students, is a stability and the relationships that they create with the staff. So I would ask that the school board look at the STEM Academy as a real asset and put, don't let it go by the wayside, and put the resources and all behind it that it needs.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Jordan, school board members, Superintendent Boone. And you can always invite it back to Little Creek to ride that bicycle again. I am Diane Outlaw, a member of EA N, a resident of 535 Nicholson Street in Norfolk. I extend to you again this afternoon invitation. In forty-four days, Shirley George will take off her hat and take the many cruises. She has decided to retire. I extend the invitation. Shirley George was an educator here in the City of Norfolk as a special ed teacher. As EA N President, she brought Lake Taylor High School unto the attention of National Educational Association. It became their priority school. She sat through many of these meetings. She was cooperative and not argumentative, but she, her point came across, and some changes were made through her tenure. We would surely miss her, but I would like to extend the invitation to each of you to attend the retirement celebration on Thursday, June 22nd at 5:00 PM at the Town Center, City Center City Club in Virginia Beach. RSVPs may be made at 757-486-0202. Thank you. I put a run rate right there.
Can you leave that information with the, Janelle, please?
Please.
Our next speakers are James Peel, followed by Melanie Hurdle.
I'll try to get through as quick as I can. It could just obsess me to be here. I was born in Norfolk, Virginia, 1940. That means right now, I'm approximately seventy-six years old right now. I'll be seventy-seven in August. I went to Booker T. School, and I graduated. I was a very good football player. Everybody knew me in Narcom, and everybody hated to see me out on that field. But I learned from our school's teachers. Our school teachers taught us well. And our mothers taught us well. And I stayed there until I got my diploma. I was graduated from Booker T. at nineteen and fifty-eight. The last school of our color. They closed the school in nineteen fifty-nine. I remained in the Army from fifty-nine until seventy-two. I was a Master Sergeant. I went to Fort Bragg, Fort McCullin, Alabama, Chemical Corps. Came a parachutist in nineteen sixty, Eighty-Second Airborne Division. I went up to Fort Bragg, then I went to Washington DC Arlington Cemetery. I was a Master Sergeant. They made me go to school at nighttime because I didn't have a degree. So I went to American, said myself, what I got to do? I went to one of the counselors, and she told me, she said, you know what you have to do? You got to go to school. I said, what there? Go to Montgomery College and take a course. And that's what I did. And the Lord helped me get a good counselor, and she told me these things. She said, look, put your crow requirements ahead of everything, and guess what? You will get a degree in anything. From that time on, I got my associate degree. Then I came up with my bachelor's degree in nineteen seventy-seven. Let me tell y'all something, and I hope I got my fifty-eight second. We have a school by the name of Booker T. We have mold in our school. I have tried to find out a way how to get it out. So since I'm a parole officer, I'm a retired parole officer and a police officer out of Washington DC, I went and they told me to come back to the school board. I was sent over there to take care of things. And I came back. Every money can be spent, but in Booker T. Booker T. is the foundation of our culture. For some reason, we can't get the mold out. Personally, what I did is went over there and cleaned up the atrium myself, since I know how to do outdoor work. Right now, that mold will kill the kids and people who work in there. For some reason, we don't have no money, and I don't have no time. I got about two more seconds. I want my school people who work with me and concerned citizens to stand up for a minute, too. Look at these people here. Look at these little folks that we meet every so often at Booker T. Cafeteria. I hope that you find time to get the mold out of that school before somebody passes away. And I'm hoping, like I said, I am going to come again and talk to you. Dr. Hester was not able to come, so I told her I would take her place. I'm hoping money is provided to get the mold out of that school. Booker T. Washington High School is my foundation, and I'm hoping that you understand that. And these people here are here to represent that. And Dr. Hester, I will tell her that I did in fact, do what I supposed to do. So I was supposed to, Wednesday night is my special night, so I gave up my barber class to come here to talk to you. But I don't usually do that for nobody. But she asked me when I was going to a meeting, Mr. Peel, I need you to go. I said, where? School board. I want y'all to know, that mold is killing people. God bless you, and have a nice evening.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Melanie Hurdle. My child goes to the Southside STEM Academy at Camp Estella. He's in the fifth grade. Also, I am a member of the Parent Core Group at Camp Estella. Also, I am the Vice President of the Camp Estella Civic League. I come here on behalf of the Southside STEM Academy at Camp Estella because I have heard some disturbing news concerning our principal, Dr. Ambrose. But I'm here to stand here on her behalf, and as well as the school, that she has done a wonderful job at the school. She has done a great turnaround with the school. Even though we're not accredited yet, the grades have, and the scores have improved and moved up drastically because of the leadership that she has given at Southside STEM Academy at Camp Estella. At the same time, I'm looking that it's just not her responsibility, it's also the parents' responsibility and the school board, the city officials, to get involved as well, to go as far as we can to actually take our children to the next level. I looked at my son, how he was going through so much at the same time with the behavior issues from the other children that's there. We need some of the SSO officers in place. We need deans at that school there. So that way, they can get the behavior issue under control. She's done a great job, even in spite of the things that she's requested over and over from the district and has been denied repeatedly, repeatedly. So at the same time, I'm asking that the school board and the city officials to step in and give her what she needs. She's an awesome principal there. She has given entirely everything that she possibly can do through the week, and even on the weekends, working there. She's been there seven days a week. So therefore, I'm asking and requesting that, you know, look at her removal from the school. Look at it a little closer, not to let her be removed from that school, not for her to move on, but look at what she has done. She has did some great, great things at the school, great things for the school, for the students. Her heart is for the students. Our hearts is for the students. The teachers have worked so hard, and so has Dr. Ambrose have worked so hard. So I'm asking you all to look at what she has done, the accomplishments that she has done. At the same time, some of the things that she has been denied. The behavior issues that's there, it can get under control. She has actually moved it a lot further than it was when she took over the school four years ago. I have seen a great increase of her work and the teachers' dedication there. I thank you for this time for me to stand before you. And I'm believing that you all, as well as we and the teachers there at Southside STEM Academy at Camp Estella, we do want our children to excel and to go beyond where they're at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Ed Merkel, followed by Janice McKee.
Good evening. My name is Ed Merkel, Mr. Chair, Superintendent. And first, I'd like to thank the Master Sergeant for his service. He served, obviously, in some difficult times in the military as well. I'm a career changer, so I've been a teacher at Lake Taylor High School now for just over a year. I started January of last year. Teach algebra, which is the baseline course at a high school. So I have very challenging kids, but I have their brothers and sisters from the STEM Academy. And as Merkel said, we have, my stepdaughter is at the STEM Academy, and my older stepdaughter is at Maury. So the only place I wanted to apply for a job when I made a decision to be a career changer was a Norfolk City school. We lived in Norfolk. We wanted to make a commitment here. And I will tell you that I have never made a salary this low since I was a young officer in the military. But I've never worked as many hours as I have worked now that I'm a school teacher. I did spend twenty-five years in the service and then eleven more years in public and private service. And I do think I offer something to the kids that maybe a teacher that's been there thirty or forty years does not offer. I do love my kids. I see the needle move, but the needle moves very slowly. And I would ask the school boards, continue indulgence in schools like the STEM Academy, Lake Taylor, and others, that the needle doesn't move very fast. I see it every day. I see what happens. My kids work the night shift. Couple of my boys get off at 5:30 in the morning, come to school at 7:30. I could have, most kids don't show up with paper and pencil when they start math class. None of them bring a book. One or two will have a backpack. The rest don't have anything. So the needle moves slow. And I would just ask you to continue to consider, as I know the superintendent does, equitable and equal are not the same. And I would ask that you continue to look to support schools like the STEM Academy, the staff, and schools like Lake Taylor that receive students from the STEM Academy. We have many challenges. And I would ask that you continue to take a close look at that. As you do that, instability is probably more important than anything else. I have learned that through the children that I have. Mostly, they want to know that you're going to be there the next day, and it's very important to them. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Janice McKee. I live in the City of Norfolk. My address is 903 Haddon Street. I am currently the President of the Camp Estella Civic League, along with a PTA member for the STEM Academy at Camp Estella, as well as a member of the Southside Education Committee. I am here tonight because it concerns me that a young lady, I was hard on Dr. Ambrose. I'm just going to tell y'all. I was hard on her. I rode her like you ride a horse. I was hard on her from the first day. The day I met Dr. Ambrose, the building was closing. She came in, whole thing, and looked scared to death because her whole, what she thought she was coming to was not. Everything in the building was packed because the transition had to take place. So pretty much, the committees and volunteers came in and packed the buildings along with the teachers that were moving. And she walked in and she said, I said, hi. She said, hi. I said, who are you? And she said, my name is Dr. Ambrose. I said, come on in. We were in the auditorium, packing the boxes. The whole school was torn to pieces. This lady walked into a whole school being separated into two schools. Came through the second grade in one building, third grade through the fifth grade in another building. First time ever coming in the building. Did not have anybody to come along with her when school opened up the next year to say, okay, I'm, I'm a shadow you to help you along. One AP and a disciplinary specialist. The AP at first floated between the two schools. And at first, the AP stayed in the building. And then we realized that she needed to go over there to the other building. She had to go over to the other building. Therefore, Dr. Ambrose was still responsible for her whole building. Plus, they were not accredited. The building was not accredited. The State Department was in that building every month. Know how I know? Because I came. Every, every time, it looked like every time I show up, they were there. She was given a little help, but not much. Know how I know? Because I was there. And what you really need about the State Department, they tell you. If you, if you standing around, and because I visit Richmond, they know who I am, so they tell me. So we kind of failed her. I gave her a chance, but the problem was, we failed her. And I just got to tell you all, for everybody with a face tore up, we failed her. She didn't fail us. She wasn't giving these great glorious children. First of all, the children were transitioned because they had never been across the bridge, half of them. And then to get on a bus, and two hundred children ride on buses to get to a building. And then to try to get the children back together to get them to be taught. Then to have transitional, brand-new teachers then, and then when they come back to new building, brand-new teachers. Come on, y'all. Norfolk Public Schools and, and us community people, we failed her. And I know the bell ringing, but y'all need to hear me clearly. We have failed her. Instead of telling her what was wrong, what happened to walking in and say, let me reach out and help you? Even Ms. McKee, with the mean Ms. McKee, I got her heart. And I watched her. And that lady put in, I was, like I do on my job, two, three o'clock in the morning, ain't supposed to be in the building working. I, I do that on my job. Because it's for the kids. And she truly for the kids. So consider what you thought about doing. Because if, I mean, I'm, you know, I go out with a Richmond, y'all know I'm a little crazy.
Our last speaker is Jaquana Gillis.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jaquana Gillis. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. I teach seventh grade math at Ruffner Academy. Ooh, excuse me. So I did not prepare a great speech like everybody did. I came here with the intent, um, of love for my principal. So sitting here, I googled what makes a great principal. So reading it, it says, great principals take responsibility for school success. Great principals lead teaching and learning. Great principals hire, develop, and retain excellent teachers. Excuse me. Great principals build a strong school community. So now, it also asks, what challenges does the school face? So when we're looking at Ruffner Academy, we're faced with different challenges. We have people that are homeless that attend our school. So when they come to Ruffner Academy, they're not looking, oh, did I do my homework? Oh, do I have a pencil to bring to class? But we, as teachers, we provide that and we build a environment that is safe for them. So, um, excuse me. What I'm asking you is that you reconsider your, um, thoughts or your, whatever your thinking was about Principal Cook. She is an excellent principal. So I asked that instead of looking at, did we meet, um, the past, I meant the SOL pass rate, look to see, did we make progress? Did Ruffner make progress with all of the challenges that we face at our school? We're not going to turn lemons all the way to lemonade. We're going to take it step by step. So we're just asking for a little bit more time. Give it a little bit more time to see the growth that she is making, the changes that she is doing over at Ruffner Academy. She was doing some wonderful things with what she's given, with the circumstances, with the children that we have in our building. So that's all we're asking is that you reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jordan, that concludes all of the speakers that have signed up.
All right, we thank everyone for, uh, sharing with the board tonight. Uh, we're going to proceed with the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that, uh, school board members would like to have addressed separately? Uh, hearing now, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we, uh, we approve the consent agenda.
Have a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion or any discussion? Uh, hearing now, Ms. Banks, if you call the roll, please.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood? Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Uh, next on our agenda is a update on our, uh, career and technical education, high school planning. Uh, Dr. Boone?
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. As the board and I have been engaged in conversation, um, since my arrival about Norfolk's vision for a comprehensive career in technical high school. There's been work that was done in the district for about four years prior, four or five years prior to my, uh, return to the district, as well as the opportunity for the district to visit a school that I had similar to the one that we're envisioning here in Norfolk in, in Western Massachusetts. A lot of work has been going on, uh, in the last seventeen months to bring this together as a means of, uh, moving forward with a goal that not only the board has, but the community at large and city council shares. Tonight, uh, we've asked Ms. Etta Goshen to do a, a very high-level overview of the progress and the work that, that we've undertaken and where we're headed for our next steps. I should say, though, not in attendance as part of this presentation tonight, you will see that this is a true, and I say true partnership with Ty Water Community College. Dr. Edna Colivani and all of the members of her leadership team of the community college have been working with us very closely to build this vision together and to acknowledge the work that, and, and capitalize on the work that had been done in, uh, previously in terms of what the infrastructure of this, this school will look like. So at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Goshen to, to, to brief the board on a high level, um, at a high level in terms of where we're headed with, with bringing this CTE school to a possibility.
Good evening, Mr. Jordan, Dr. Boone and school board members. Thank you for this opportunity to get, provide a brief overview of what we call reimagining the educational experience for college and career readiness for our students within Norfolk Public Schools. As Dr. Boone has stated, this has been a labor of love of many internal and external stakeholders, such as the Greater Norfolk Corporation, Ty Water Community College, our business partners, two and other four-year universities. In introducing to you, we're looking at a campus approach that allows our students to move on to be highly successful in whatever they plan to pursue as post-secondary endeavors. Introducing to you, for the sake of a name holder, we're introducing the Norfolk Career Pathway Center. This was initiated by Norfolk Public Schools, Hampton Roads Employers, the city of Norfolk, and higher education, where we're providing work-linked education and higher academics for people of all stages in life, as, which means high school students as well as adults who are transitioning within careers or embarking on careers for the first time. The center is focused on our regions defining industries. We've had a wonderful opportunity for Opportunity Inc. to conduct various workforce development studies to help us look at which of the, uh, regions, uh, industries were the tops. And we looked at ship repair and shipbuilding industry, healthcare, advanced manufacturing, tourism, hospitality, information technology, and STEM. What's included on this site is the first phase, which will be my focus for this evening, is the Norfolk Academic Career Technical High School. When we think about that, we don't think about your old-fashioned vocational high school. We're talking about high academics where our children exceed the norm, whether it's in core academics and career and technical education. As we move on to different phases, we're talking about regional adult training centers with onsite employers, military transition centers, as well as future phases that looks at innovation entrepreneurships and startup businesses onsite. But again, the first and the, uh, major focus will be the academic career and technical high school, and the other things will phase in at a later time. As part of the CTE high school, we look at a concept that has been shared before. It's a full-time comprehensive high school with a regional, that's part of a regional pathway center. We're looking at rigorous, rigorous academics with a high-demand, high-quality programs with dual enrollment, advanced placement, industry credentials, and licensure. The facility, as it was voted upon several years ago in several school board meetings, uh, new construction at Lake Taylor High School, and I do mean several. At that time, the estimated cost was ninety million dollars in terms of looking at the facility. And then there's some additional costs for land, but that was at the time. And I want to say, we had that study done in two thousand thirteen and again in two thousand fifteen. The enrollment we're looking at is fourteen to sixteen hundred students in grades nine through twelve, phase in overtime, with a regional adult education and workforce development center that will service over six hundred adults. So when we talk about this building, we've always joked, it's a twenty-four-seven building. You will see the lights on constantly. You have high school students in the day, and then you have the adult education courses occurring at night. Within this building, you have four academy structures. You have a regional maritime trades academy that has your ship repair, your trades and industrial. Will be applying for a governor's medical science academy where you have some of your top health and medical sciences pathways, whether it's that of nursing, adli, health, veterinarian, dental, things of that nature. You have a business and IT academy where we're talking about major entrepreneurship and learning for students, tourism, whether it's hospitality, culinary, and all of your information technology, higher-level classes such as cybersecurity, commuter information system, web design, Java gaming program, you name it. Our students will be exposed to it because they deserve the best. The other academy will be a governor STEM academy on which the division will apply. And that will focus on higher-level engineering, robotics, and design. In taking a look at understanding, you have to make small steps before you jump out. We've decided to look at a business information technology academy as the first academy to embark on this. We're looking at a pilot to begin in September twenty seventeen with full implementation of this academy in twenty eighteen. Just briefly, we're looking at courses that will allow students to go into entry-level courses, dual enrollment, advanced placement, hybrid learning models where they have face-to-face learning and online learning. And then some courses will be totally virtual for students. And those are the pathways to follow. Information technology, coding, computer science, programming, and cybersecurity. Helping us to lift this up always has to be something that a community comes around. It cannot be Norfolk Public Schools only. We have an excellent partnership with Ty Water Community College who will assist us with the dual enrollment aspects. The partnership will allow us to leverage the resources that are within both institutions, help us produce graduates who are fully trained, not only for the local, uh, workforce for high-growth, high-wage areas, but also prepare them for post-secondary higher education. Help the students to earn industry-recognized credentials. Help them to accelerate to either a certificate or a degree program, looking at students being able to earn an associate's degree and a high school diploma at the same time. And looking at a framework that allows us to grow out dual enrollment that doesn't only sit in English, but it crosses over all core content as well as electives. That's a little small, but in, in, in overview, it looks at a career pipeline that we can touch on various different areas. So this school doesn't only service high school students. It helps to build the city of Norfolk as a whole. You can, uh, enter as a high school student, an encumbered worker who is currently employed, working to improve skills, or a career switcher. I believe one of our great teachers talked about being a great, a great career switcher. Some of the pipelines that our students will have an opportunity to do is working with Ty Water Community College, advanced placement scores that can possibly transition to college credit. Our students will have career camps during the school year in the summer. Excellent dual enrollment, again, industry certification, pre-apprenticeship and internships where we get our students acclimated into the careers in which they'd like, as well as, uh, baccalaureate degree transfer programs going from Norfolk Public Schools to Ty Water Community College. They have the motto, come here and go anywhere. And so looking at how they can take those dual enrollment and that education and go on to two, uh, excuse me, additional four-year universities. Some of the stackable programs that TCC has put together for our students, again, being able to participate in pre-apprenticeships and apprenticeship programs, local exams, um, going on to earn a certificate and associate's degree, and then on for a transfer option of a baccalaureate, a four-year degree. Some of the stackable and seamless alignment is pretty simple. I'm not going to go too much in detail with that, but it looks at how you can travel from Norfolk Public Schools to TCC on to a four-year university. Or some students may decide that they are going directly into the military, directly into the world of work. Or you can go directly from Norfolk Public Schools to a four-year university. Some of our current IT business partners who are working with our students not only to help us to build curriculum, train teachers, but also to work to provide apprenticeships and internships for our students. Town Bank, Ty Water Community College, Old Dominion, Dominion Enterprises, and Grow. Many have served currently and in the past as mentors for some of our students and teachers as well as our CTE Advisory Council members. Um, many stakeholders for this new facility will be well-represented. We're looking at a governing board that includes Norfolk Public Schools, Norfolk City Council, Ty Water Community College, and other institutions of higher education. We are in partnership with Virginia Wesleyan. Dr. Boone has worked closely with the university president, Greater Norfolk Corporation, and additional stakeholders that include parents, students, and business community partners. Currently, to support this, Norfolk City Council, some years ago, set aside one point five million dollars to start the process. That process has allowed us, over the several different years, to create educational specifications, looking at the programming that needs to go into building so our students can be successful versus having a building that drives what our students need to learn. The needs of our students will d- drive the development of a building. We've brought over seventy-five different business educators, um, community members together to help develop not only the educational programming, but the facility specifications. Our initial plan has been developed and it was shared some years ago. And we are looking forward to bringing that forward for our students. Um, next action steps, we're going to reconvene all the champions who have worked tirelessly over the past six years to get the heavy lifting done. We're going to implement the IT academy in September twenty seventeen with a group of students from Lake Taylor High School. We are in the process of applying for what is known as the VDOE Innovation Seed Grant. And that is a seed grant and a program that the Virginia Department of Education has opened up as they look for, how do you reinvent and come across with new approaches for high school? They are not looking for an edited version of the current high school, but they're really looking for school divisions to go out of the box and take the limits off of what the high school experience means for students today. We're also working on the, uh, program readiness timeline. As you see, the pilot will begin, or should we say, pre-pilot begins in September twenty seventeen with full implementation in twenty eighteen. We're working with different individuals to come up with a plan for a regional education partner planning, which means trying to bring onboard other school divisions. And then there's various levels of work that's being done by our great school board, our great city, um, representatives, and Greater Norfolk Corporation. And that concludes my very quick update of six years of work.
Thank you, Ms. Goshen. And, and what I want to highlight for the board is bringing it together, the, the great work that's come on. We're timelines now for when we start this. So we're no longer talking about what our vision may be in Norfolk, but really moving toward implementation, uh, with this pilot work going on this fall, working to look for resources to support the dual enrollment tuition for students, as well as, as you saw, as Ms. Goshen shared, that we're also seeking a planning grant to assist in, in the deeper work that has to occur this, this coming fall. But whether the state awards us a planning grant or not, we're still full steam ahead. And this is no longer a vision, but truly becoming a reality. The facility piece will still require investment by city. Uh, perhaps if we do- The facility piece will still require investment by city, perhaps if we do it as a public-private partnership, as we've done some of the other more recent school construction, but we aren't waiting for the building to implement the vision. We have developed the infrastructure, will continue to work with the advisory group to help us refine that, and then we're kicking this off. So we're very pleased to be able to bring this level to the board at this time, and be glad to entertain any questions.
Yeah, I'm going to go to Dr. Robertson. Just wanted to add also that during the Mayor Alexander's State of the City address, and he was addressing the career pathways, he was really describing his commitment to this, to this effort. So with that, just, Dr. Robertson?
I just want to say thank you so much. Within two months of my joining the board in two thousand eleven, I sat in on the very first conversations and discussion about the comprehensive technical education program, and have watched how it has evolved over time. And the Tao philosopher says, "The journey of a thousand miles begins with one step." We've taken many steps toward that, and it's finally so good to see the fruition of that step in getting this pilot program done, and I hope within my lifetime that we have it fully implemented, and I trust we shall. So, good job. Dr. Boone, thank you for taking this, and I applaud not waiting on the building, because if we had to wait on the building, it may never come about. But if we got this first step in, let's hit the ground running, and let's move this thing forward, because it's great for the school division, and more importantly, it's great for the students of Norfolk and the surrounding region, to give them opportunities for the jobs of the future.
Ms. Doyle?
I'm all in favor of the Career Pathway Center. I've been working on this. I'm glad we're starting with a pilot. I think that's a good first step.
Question is, what are we thinking about in terms of the program readiness timeline? So we're thinking about one academy, pilot this fall, full implementation in eighteen. What about the other three?
Well, within each academy, you have multiple pathways, so we're bringing each pathway on as we go. For example, we'll start with business and IT, because that allows you to move forward without having heavy infrastructure, the way the other pathways would. And so once we get full implementation of the business and IT academy, concurrently, we have to apply for the governor's medical academy and the STEM academy. So we will do those things concurrently, as well as assess what we have at our current Norfolk Technical Center. Because we're doing it without the new building, we will have a dual-campus model where we can phase that Maritime Trades Academy in a little bit later. But while we're doing the business and IT academy, we're applying for the two governor programs, and we're assessing what's needed at the technical center so we can bring that academy on. The good thing about it is we have business partners that are working on all academies, so we're not sitting and waiting for one, so the other one can begin. The other thing is, in order for this to be successful, we have to reach back and make sure our K five, six, eight programming is in place so that they can matriculate up. And so, for example, I'll use Southside STEM Academy, this K eight. Well, we already have started, because we already have the project lead the way. That leads with possibilities to connect to this particular program, that look at some of the other middle schools and some of the other elementary schools. You have to backfill in order to be successful tomorrow. So we're bringing on the academy, but we're also building K five and six eight, so we can strengthen the pipeline.
So you mentioned the business IT academy, and you mentioned Lake Taylor students.
Yes.
Are the students going to NTC, or are they doing it at Lake Taylor?
It's a dual-campus model. For example, some of the core classes will have to remain at Lake Taylor. At Norfolk Technical Center, you have your Java and programming and things of that nature, then they will do the dual-campus model and go over and take some of those courses that may be the dual enrollment.
And let me add to that also, you know, as we fine-tune the details for the fall of eighteen, accessing those heavier industry, heavier manufacturing labs will be critically important as we build out some of the other work. So we aren't taking our welding program or any of that offline. That's not what we're doing. We're linking it and strengthening it to address the maritime focus and what the workforce in this region is asking for.
And starting the pilot allows us to take the walls off our thinking, and take the walls off of our schools. And so if we do not have particular equipment or particular environment, we're partnering with the business community, so their work site becomes our classroom.
Right.
And so not only are the students taking classes in Norfolk Public Schools campuses, they may be at Todd Water Community College, they may be at Virginia Wesleyan, Old Dominion, but they may go to Centerra the way they do now for clinical settings. They may go to Grow to take the IT, because we don't have it here, but then they can transition there. The other thing is, we are limitless now because we have so much virtual capability that we may not have had in the past. So an IT student literally can take a class, and he's a, he or she's a cross-country, but they're taking Norfolk Public Schools course. So those are some of the things that have transitioned over time. Where we started six years ago, it was within a building. Now we've taken the windows, doors, and walls off of that building, and our children are going everywhere, and they're starting in elementary middle. By the time our students get here, they'll be so used to virtual, it'll be second nature.
The other thing I would encourage us all to do as well, I know we're building this program first, building second, let's not have the building follow so far behind that we don't know what the building is going to be in years to come as we roll out the various pilots. So I think it's important that we program first, but we simultaneously look at what the needs of the academies that we're rolling out, and build it, I don't mean technically build it, but as in design the building concurrently with program design, and so that we're not waiting six years to say to the community, this is what we think the building needs are now.
And we think, Ms. Doyle, that that's one of the things that are kind of stymied, the process and the progress on the Conference of CTE School, because we kept focusing on the fundraising for the building, but we hadn't answered the question, what are we going to put in the building?
Yeah, and I'm not-
And what will our needs be? And so we think now, having built the infrastructure-
Right.
-in terms of the program, and that then will drive what the building looks like, what the equipment and infrastructure needs will be for that.
Right, and so I suggest, though, as we roll out the academies, we're going to know what that building need will be, versus waiting for all the academies to roll out and say, okay, now what are the needs of all four academies? So I think it's kind of a build, design, build, design along the way.
Well, that was the importance of defining what those four cluster of pathways would be.
Right.
Because now we know. And so those aren't the negotiable part of the work.
Right.
Those represent where we're going, and so making sense out of that, and going back to the earlier specs that have been done, to see how closely those align now with the direction we're taking.
Yeah, and I want to commend Kenyetta and Dr. Boone for really working hard and educating folks in city council and in the community about where we are in this, because I think that's going to go a long way for gaining community support and partnerships. So again, thank you for your focus on this, and I'm very excited about it.
Ms. Pessine?
Well, this is certainly exciting, and I don't have the same historical knowledge as some of my board colleagues, so some of my questions may reflect that. But so, the presentation suggests that there'll be fourteen hundred to sixteen hundred students in this, but they won't necessarily be in the building at one time. I guess what concerns me is the size of the schools, and how that relates to academic outcomes.
Well, you can look at it in different ways. When you embark on a project such as this, you always think about personal learning and not losing the individual in the numbers. So if you look at the governor's Health and Medical Sciences Academy, each academy may only have four hundred students, and so you have that personal touch within those four hundred students, but they're part of a larger system. And then the students will be phased in over time, because you don't bring all sixteen hundred, and it may not be sixteen hundred, just think about, that was a planning from six years ago.
Right.
It may be twelve hundred, and of the twelve hundred, two hundred may be adults. Then you also look at the scheduling between nine and twelve. By the time they get to the twelfth grade, they're off at an apprenticeship site, they may spend part of their day at a university, so they may not even all be in the building at the same time. And the important thing about this, you may have fourteen hundred students, but we're looking at being innovative, so that master scheduling may make that building feel like the child is so important, they may feel like they're the only one in the building, and everyone's paying attention and doing what I need for me. And so we'll look at the scheduling to make sure no child is lost in the numbers and in the size.
Okay, so, and what would the, have you given thought as to what the leadership structure might look like? I mean, would each of the academies have their own leadership team, or would there be an overarching?
The structure that had been discussed previously with the board was that there would be overall principal leadership, and then the other support for both the academics as well as the CTE programming. And so certainly, there are models where if a student is in a particular career pathway, how do those students navigate together, because they, particularly for their CTE courses and other things. So there's some clustering that will occur to keep students who are in the same pathway focus moving along together.
Okay, all right. And I know from a community standpoint, a question that I know has been around for the many years that this has been discussed, is, you know, we know what the commitment from city council is, but aside from the programming piece, what is the financial commitment from the partners? Are there, is there any commitment on that front financially?
We believe now that we have commitment from the mayor, from council, as Mr. Jordan indicated, with the mayor commenting on it at his State of the City address on Friday. The devil's going to be in the details of how we get it funded, and that's when I mentioned the public-private partnership, because we've been very clear with the city that this should not be designed to take the place of any other facility needs that the school district determines need to be addressed. And also, this is what the city has been asking for, so its commitment should match the ask.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
What?
Well, I would just like, the fact that we're moving forward and not waiting for a physical facility, and in terms of how we're going to fund it, it just seems like you've really engaged the community and the in-kind services to make this program move forward, so I do applaud.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I guess I'll just, you know, kind of recap. So we've continued our dialogue with the partners. Unfortunate that we couldn't get our scheduling straight for Todd Water Community College to be here, but I think it might be a good opportunity for us to invite them to dinner, and really have them have the opportunity to describe the relationship and teamwork that's been built. You all may recall, at one time, there were some questions about the strength of the partnership between TCC and Norfolk Public Schools, and the leadership that Todd Water Community College is quite clear, and the growth and the progress that has taken place over these last several months. And we also touched on the governance structure, so that's still in place, and as Ms. Goshen mentioned, getting our task force back together with the representation that we've had, plus some others, is going to be key. So even while they're working on the pilot, from the governance perspective, we're piloting right along with them in parallel. So we're doing work to not just having the staff do the work, but we're working on our pieces in terms of governance and fundraising and support, as we had before, but with much deeper and focused attention than I think we've had in the past. So with that, Dr. Boone, any final comments you have regarding this?
No, just, I just want to thank Ms. Goshen, Dr. Roberts, Dr. Colivani, and her team from TCC, and those from the Greater Norfolk Corporation, Barry Bishop, Tommy Johnson, who have never abandoned this project, and appreciate, really appreciate the renewed energy that we've been able to foster with the partnership with TCC, and glad to be able to put some timelines on it now, because, you know, what gets measured and monitored gets done. So now we have some timelines associated with it. So I want to thank everyone for the input tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Goshen. Next, we have a budget amendment update. Dr. Boone?
You received tonight, as we were coming in, truly hot off the press, the work that Ms. Ingram and her team and I have done relative to what we know about the budget to this point. We, the city council is not scheduled to take a vote on this budget until next Tuesday, the twenty-third. However, we know that the sooner we can complete the school board's budgeting process, the sooner we can offer contracts to all of our staff and begin moving for the next school year. This is based on what we've heard from council's deliberations and the discussion that, and even that three million dollars in recurring funds to the district, and three million dollars in one-time funds. Obviously, then that's four million dollars shy of the request that the school board made to council with the proposed budget that you adopted. So Ms. Ingram and I, and the leadership team and her team have worked to at least give you all the numbers, and what we probably cannot accomplish, given the resources we received. It certainly is very encouraging, because we stood at zero for a long time, and so now we've moved from zero. And so, you know, I'm pleased with the movement. The one challenge, in addition to not having the full funding, is the fact that we still are building a budget on one-time funds. So that means our FY nineteen budget will start with at least a three-million-dollar deficit, because one-time funds can't be used for recurring costs. So I'm going to ask Ms. Ingram if there's anything else she wants to highlight on this page, but again, we're showing what we know based on the deliberations to this point. Obviously, we won't have a final set of recommendations to the board until city council has adopted its budget, because then we can come back with very specific recommendations, but we wanted to be able to share with the board what it looks like based on the six million that has been discussed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Jordan, Dr. Gabriel, school board members, Dr. Boone. What you have before you is really our first pass at trying to do some reconciliations, like Dr. Boone said, as to how we could go about closing that gap. And this, what you have before you is what we have come up with thus far, and as you see, we still have some ways to go, and then we also would need input from the board if you had any specific recommendations of things that can be reduced.
Yeah, and just for clarity, what I really wanted to accomplish today has been, obviously, much conversation at council and out in the community about the school board's proposed budget, the announcement of the support with the six million dollars, and wanted to make sure that the board was aware of how the administration was beginning to look at some things based upon those numbers. As part of the discussions that have taken place with city council leadership and administration, while Dr. Boone is correct that for this year, we're looking at the hybrid of part one-time, part recurring, the commitment that we have and that we've made, governing body to governing body, is to continue to come back and work together on a funding formula to begin able to address what we know we need from a recurring basis, and to move away from the one-time funding. So in one sense, we just wanted to be able to say, this is how things are looking, and to give the board members an opportunity to go back and look at what's on the table so that we can be prepared, as we will eventually vote on June seventh on our budget, and at the same time, to also just alert the board that we're going to start our planning for next year's budget, June eighth. So we've already said to the council and to the city administration that if we're going to be able to put this work together, to work on this formula, and to move away from what I think turns into this high-stakes three months of budgeting, we're going to start that work, as the board has asked that we start that work this year and move forward. So it's really not a time right now for a lot of debate on this, but we just wanted to make sure that you were prepared, what may occur if the city council in these votes- to make sure that you were prepared, what may occur if the city council indeed votes, as has been discussed, and what the administration is looking at right now in terms of our task of making sure that we pass a balanced budget by June 30th. But we're looking at the June 7th date, because we also want to give the division time to do all the work that they have to do with contracts and all the other things associated with the budget.
The one thing that I did not say in my earlier comments is that what we're sharing here reflects on what we heard as priorities from the board throughout all of the budget deliberations in March and into early April, and that addressing the pay and comp study was a priority of the board, and so that's the goal in terms of what we've provided tonight.
All right, anything before we move on? So with that, just like to, you know, thank the board. There's been a lot of back-channel conversations in terms of board members supporting the budget. We received a great deal of support from our teachers and principals and staff in their advocacy to city council members directly and in their public hearings, and I don't think without us all working together, we would have broken through. Said earlier, we celebrate progress, so it's not what we've asked for, but we will celebrate the progress and continue to work forward till we meet our ultimate target. So thank you, Ms. Ingram, on that piece, and while you're at the podium, we can go ahead and proceed with the monthly financial report.
The monthly financial report for period 10, which ended April the 30th of 2017. Revenue received as of April 30 was $255,819,000, or 79.5% of the total budget. This compares with 81.5% for the same time period in fiscal year 2016 and 78.2% in fiscal year 2015. On the expenditure side, same time period, we have encumbered or expensed $255,642,000, or 79.4% of the total budget. This compares to 82.4% for the same time period in fiscal year 2016 and 79.8% for fiscal year 2015. There were no budget transfers, there were $50,000 or greater for the time period. And the next page is just, as usual, a different presentation of the revenue and expenditures.
Any questions or comments from the board? And Dr. Boone, anything else you'd like to add?
No, I just, again, want to acknowledge the work of Ms. Ingram and her team, and the fact that because this was a challenging fiscal year, and the goal of the board in making sure that we were able to provide the full two and a half percent increase, across the board increase that the board had in this budget, despite the state not living up to its proposed commitment, we have really tightened our belts to make sure we could come up with that 1.4 million dollars to keep our employees' hold with this year's two and a half percent. So we've been doing a lot of work with the budget, and to your comment earlier, Mr. Jordan, about the budget work beginning on June 8th? No. We already did, okay.
I just, you know, just can't let me have anything, that's all right.
It's metaphorical.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report?
I move that we approve the monthly financial report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Doyle, second by Dr. Gabriel. Any further discussion on the financial report? Hearing Ms. Banks, if you call roll, please.
Ms. Basine?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Hopefully, last on our agenda, we passed by the Educational Planning Steering Committee update. Dr. Boone, did you want to do that now?
We can defer that.
Or would you defer it for our work session?
Yes.
You all comfortable with that?
Sure.
Since it is warm in here. So, what's that? Didn't notice, oh, okay. Finally, just matters of the board, just briefly, just want to remind the board that we do have the June works, June 7th work session coming up. We will have a closed session to deal with some personnel. We also will be addressing the budget that we just talked about, as well as other presentations that are already out there for draft. Also, be on the lookout for some save the dates coming up in terms of items that are flowing from the Agenda Planning Meeting and giving you all feedback on different requests that we had from there. Anything critically important that anyone would like to add or question? Dr. Robinson?
Just want to say, we took possession of Larchmont Elementary.
Oh, okay.
And we're taking possession of Oceanview.
All right.
Yes.
Pushing on.
Pushing on.
All right. Okay, Dr. Boone, any final comments or thoughts?
I want to acknowledge all of the work of our principals, teachers, and others this week, and as for the continued support of families and the communities, as our students have started their state testing, their SOL testing, and will go for the next couple of weeks. And while this is just one portion of our report card, it is the most public aspect of our report card, and we know that a lot of work has been going on this year, as we shared in the workshop earlier, and so we're wishing everyone the best.
All right, with that, meeting adjourned.